...in council chambers at 9:00 AM on Monday, October the 3rd. So, welcome everyone, and could we have the, a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Thank you. Counselor King, Counselor Campbell, all in favor? Thank you. And, we do not have any introduction of late items, they're all on here, good. We have a couple of delegations today, and first up, we have an Interior Health Authority update, and it would be presented by Susan Brown, the Health Service Administrator for Community. So, welcome, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. So, as I've been introduced, I'm the Health Services Administrator for Community Programs for the South Okanagan. Your agenda probably says there's supposed to be a couple more people with me, however, they have deserted me. I'm quite glad to be here. And, the first slide, you've had delegations, I believe, in other years, also, I haven't been at a Soias Town Council before, but usually, we start with this slide, which is updated every year, just to give you an estimate of what's happening around the region, our budget, our size, the number of municipalities that we have. We're a fairly large organization with about nineteen thousand employees across a geography that is quite large. What I've come to speak to you about this time, though, is what we're trying to move forward with in Interior Health on our five key strategies, but want to start with why. What we do know is that we have very small percentages of our population that are taking up very large percentages of our budget. The frail and care and end-of-life and frail and community is especially noticeable. I think in a Soias, you're very aware of the fact that our seniors' population is growing and aging, and it's a very complex need of services that are provided in community, in residential, in acute, and all of those need to have attention, or we're going to start running into some serious issues over the next few years. Minister Lake has pointed out that we're trying to provide services to keep people at home as much as possible. This is a shift that not only benefits the patient, but the healthcare system as a whole. So, this is our five key strategies. This is on a mandate from the B.C. government, guiding all of the health authorities, including Interior Health, to an integrated primary and community care health system. Having the services shift from hospital to community is the plan. So, again, why are we doing it? We know that people are living longer, that changing populations are prompting governments around the world to find better ways of providing care in the community. What we're looking towards is having teams of practitioners that include physicians and other primary care workers, working alongside other health professionals that provide the right care for the right patient in the right setting. For the past four years, Interior Health has been studying, designing, and evaluating a redesigned healthcare system that integrates primary and community care services. Projects that have been taken have realized highly successful outcomes, but with very small population groups. Our new strategies have to work to expand this, so we can reach larger numbers of patients. The first strategy is about enhancing appropriate primary healthcare, and in this case, it is the physicians that are the lead, and Interior Health is the supporting player. Primary care is the principal point of consultation and treatment for patients in the healthcare system. So, we're looking to create what are called "primary care homes," built on integrating or linking family practices with other service providers such as mental health, community care, public health, and working alongside community agencies. In the South Okanagan, we're still at the very earliest planning stages of this initiative, and we hope to have a clear process for community consultation in the next few months. Strategy two is one where Interior Health is definitely taking the lead, because this is talking about improving primary community care delivery for frail seniors and those living with chronic, complex conditions. What we're trying to do in this case is to provide specialized care homes. So, the physicians are looking at developing primary care homes, we're looking to develop the specialized care services in a new and different way. Access to those services is what we will be focusing on. Access doesn't always mean "in the community," oftentimes, that's a financial issue, but it does mean, how can we improve access? It's Monday morning! That tongue is just tripping. We're looking to have care planning take place in collaboration with older adults and with their families. We really are looking to support independent living at home, so that less than three percent of people age seventy-five years and older with a chronic disease require hospital care by 2017, 18. The third strategy has to do with mental health and substance use, and again, we're building on that system of primary care and adding MHSU teams. We already have a great example of this in the South Okanagan with the development of Martin Street in Penticton, which has allowed us so far to attach at least six hundred and fifty patients who were not attached to a physician prior to the development of that program, and most of them were doctoring in the emergency departments. So, that's at least six hundred and fifty people that we've taken out, except for real The fourth strategy has to do with improving timely access to elective surgery, and my apologies, I'll read a bit more here, because I'm not the acute care director. What we're aiming for here is to achieve the province's three-year goal of having ninety-five percent of patients scheduled to have their elective surgery completed by forty weeks in this fiscal year, and by eighteen, nineteen, ninety-five percent of patients completed their surgery by twenty-six weeks. Trying to determine wait lists in surgery is a very complex process, but what the province is looking for is the ability to let people know where you are at, as well as moving that surgery along more quickly. In the South Okanagan, we'll see our greatest advances after the Penticton Tower is finished, when we have new and larger operating rooms. At the moment, our operating rooms were built in the nineteen fifties, and with much of the equipment that's needed, you have to take one piece out during the surgery, just so you can bring another piece in. We will have state-of-the-art operating rooms when they are completed. The fifth strategy, I think, is probably nearer and dearer to your hearts, and it has to do with the system of care across rural and remote communities, and working alongside our Aboriginal partners. We had an open letter to all of our staff just a couple of weeks ago from our CEO and from the CEO of the First Nations Health Authority, really emphasizing the partnership that we will have going forward, looking at how we improve service delivery. For the Rural Service Plan, again, we are looking for further direction this fall. It will start, though, with community consultation, is my expectation. So, I want to talk about some of the things that are related to the five key strategies, where we are already seeing some accomplishments. One of these is an end-of-life care. We have, in the South Okanagan, in a Soias here, the Desert Sun Hospice Society, or Desert Valley Hospice. I do that all the time. They received thirty thousand dollars this year for the development of a palliative day hospice in a Soias. This is a relatively new model across the province. A Soias is the only area in the South Okanagan, and I believe, the only area in the Okanagan, that received funding to trial this new model, so we're quite excited to see how this works in order for us to be able to keep people at home and better supported as they go through that process of living in their final days. The secondary is substance use spaces, and there's been an announcement already about the successful proponents in some of the areas in the South Okanagan. We are still waiting, and there's further work being done to take a look at the design and ensuring that we have sufficient beds. One of our issues in the South Okanagan is many areas already have substance use facilities, and to add additional beds simply means adding on to their existing facility. Unfortunately, in the South Okanagan, we do not have a facility, which means that our partners are having to look at this differently, and probably look at how it is that we can provide substance-free support recovery beds in a different type of setting. So, we're looking forward to see what they come forward with. We've also got the Community Paramedicine Program starting. Currently, Princeton has been the prototype for about a year now, working on this project along with Preston, and they now have staff in place who are starting to see clients in their home. This is a great partnership between paramedics and the community care system in rural communities. BCAAS has difficulty attracting and keeping paramedics in their rural communities because of their system of payment. By creating positions that are part-time and that move into more of community paramedicine, so that the attendant is salaried for at least part of their time, they're creating a lot more stability. The announcement has been made for new communities, and Karamias is only the other community that's going to be getting this program in the South Okanagan yet. I fully expect that as the success of this program rolls out, we will see it happening in other communities as well. Just a bit about our medical school. The Southern Interior Medical Program is one of only two medical programs outside the lower main line that are graduating medical students. We know that having these students train and do their residencies in smaller communities in rural areas, they're more likely to stay in those rural communities. We have four residents this year, the first year of our resident program in the South Okanagan. They're based out of Penticton, but they will, over the two years that they're in the program, be working in many of the communities across the South Okanagan. I want to just speak briefly about the Division of Family Practice. This is an organization that has existed for about six years now, and this is funded by the Doctors of B.C. and the province. This partnership with physicians has really changed the way that the health authority and physicians can work together. We can work more collaboratively on projects outside of the hospital walls. There have always been committees and structures that have allowed that consultation and collaboration to happen in acute care, but not in the community. Since we have started working with the division, we have many examples of shared care projects and other projects, including a very successful prototype that started in the South Okanagan with providing physician care in residential facilities, that has now rolled out across the whole province. You've probably heard of a G.P. for Me, which was one of the large projects that they've had. We're also working on telemedicine, so that we'll have physicians knowing how they can introduce telemedicine into their practices, expanding or taking a different look at how we structure our primary maternity care, and all of the other projects that are listed there. And my last one, just about last one, that I really need to speak to is because before I moved into this role, I spent almost thirty years working in public health, so I have a bit of a tendency to have a soft spot there, but this is really talking about population health and health promotion. What is it that we are doing, working together with communities and other community partners, to create healthier communities? Because it's great for us to look at how we change our services, but our best rewards are when we are able to keep people healthy, and they have the most control over their health. I'd just like to mention some of the valuable partnerships. Interior Health does not do its work alone. We absolutely depend on our partnership with municipalities, with First Nations Health Authority, and the bands and nations, with our foundations, auxiliaries, the regional hospital district, and the regional district. And, at that point, I'll open it up if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting, and I'm going to let, I have a couple of things to say, but Counselor Campbell, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Thank you for the presentation. One of our challenges we face here is the number of doctors or physicians we have in the area, and to the point that there's a struggle to operate an emergency room with that shortage. So, my question is, whose responsibility is it for recruitment and providing resources to try to bring doctors into our community?
So, physicians are independent practitioners. For the most part, they are not hired by the health authority. We may pay them for the work they do in the emergency department, but a large piece of that recruitment retention is the physicians themselves, but we really count on the partnership. Interior Health is one of the partners, the province, and certainly, the municipalities themselves are a partner in recruiting physicians. We've found that we have the most success when we have all of our partners working together to look at what it takes to move not just a doctor, but their family into a community. We are always on the hunt for new physicians. It feels really tough when you're in a community that is struggling. What I have to say is, we have communities that are even tighter than a Soias. Doctors will choose to come for a couple of reasons. They are either city doctors, or they're rural doctors. If they want to come to a rural community, they're looking for the lifestyle, and that is often the place where municipalities play a part in really being able to attract physicians and their families. So, working collaboratively with the physicians is, I would say, the first step in trying to attract more physicians, and you have a very active physician group down here that is looking to attract more physicians.
Yeah, I guess the challenge that's a fairly new challenge for us here is the influx of snowbirds from other provinces coming. Obviously, with the age demographic, there's more medical care needed, more chronic conditions for the people coming in, so I think that's stressing, an already stressed healthcare offering here as well, which is, I think, going to continue to be a challenge as that demographic is growing every year.
We absolutely share your concern about that.
Thank you.
So, we were at UBCM last week in Victoria, and the premier did make an announcement, I believe it was ten million dollars, that she has announced for mental health and addictions, which may hopefully get some of it down here, once, in this neck of the woods, Interior Health, we're hoping.
Yeah. I would have to say that I haven't seen any details of this. What I have heard, though, is that probably the largest share will go towards Ministry for Children and Family Development, because they are responsible for child and youth mental health, and that is certainly one of the most underfunded areas. I think we realize, too, that in our province, ten million is a drop on the bucket.
So, what about the Crossing? Is it called the Crossing in Karamias? Is that for, that's what they, they're going to reopen it, and that is what their mandate is?
That's what our understanding is. The Crossing is not owned by Interior Health, it's owned and operated by the Provincial Health Services Authority, and in that way, it's a resource that's available for all of the health authorities. We certainly, when it is up and running, and in the past, would place use there on contract, but we still haven't seen, or at least I haven't seen exactly what it's going to look like. I know that they're looking at a different model than existed before, because they found the prior model to be somewhat problematic.
Sure. No, I just think that all of these things add up to being a positive move. The other thing we should tell you is that we went and visited Minister Lake last week, the town of Asouis and the town of Oliver, together, and our concern, presented so eloquently by Counselor Ventimila, was on emergency, no, electronic medical records, and we just felt that that was a really good thing to sort of tie together and have everybody sort of be able to talk to one another and be on the same page. So, just so that you know, that's what, one of the things that we presented to him last week.
The primary care home is built on what's called twelve attributes, and one of those very clearly is to have a common medical record that all of the members of the team are able to chart on and access. Right at the moment, we have one system, major system within IH. We have somewhat slightly different at SOGH, because it's a fully electronic hospital, the only one that we have in Interior Health. And then, we have the EMRs that the physicians have in their own offices, but there is a project going on right now in Interior Health. We've attracted a physician who has an excellent background in IMIT and has done this kind of work before, and he is leading a project on how it is that we can have these systems talk to each other. We're not going to get everybody moving to the same system, that's just prohibitively expensive, so what is it that we can do to translate into the systems?
Absolutely. It was just something that we felt was very important.
I agree.
Yeah, I think when we first heard about it, we were surprised, I think there was an assumption that we all felt this existed. So, when I look at opiate addictions and things like that, and realizing that there isn't this sharing system of, that's, I guess, mandatory, and that is completely synced, concerned me in the fact that it makes that even easier to do, obtain a prescription drugs from different doctors, things like that. And on top of that, medications being prescribed from different doctors that could counter badly with medications they're already on, so I think there was always a sort of assumption that, well, that must exist, so I was rather surprised that it didn't.
We do have PharmANet in B.C., and that's an important place where those drug interactions and tracking of those prescriptions, especially triplicate prescriptions for opioids, can be managed, but like all systems, it's not perfect, and certainly would be far better to be able to see the patient's medical record.
All right.
So, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate you coming and filling us in on this, and we sort of get bits and pieces all the time, but we understand that, I think it was yesterday, Saturday, that the physicians down here with Aaron were having a luncheon. Were you there?
So, no, I'm not a physician, I wasn't invited.
Well, we weren't invited either, so.
So, that's a project that isn't mentioned in here. The Joint Standing Committee on Rural Issues is a subcommittee of the General Practices Services Committee in B.C., and they awarded one project to Interior Health to find ways of focusing on rural healthcare and how we could improve the retention of physicians by making their work easier, more productive. And that project in Interior Health sits in the South Okanagan with a Soias, Oliver, Karamias, and Princeton. There's three main goals that they're working on, and one of them is to bring the physicians together. Surprisingly, many of those physicians don't know each other, may only have talked on the phone, if that, and so, they did have a small event this summer, but this big event on Saturday, they had seventy-five percent of the physicians in the South Okanagan attend, and given that some of them still need to be on call, and a few of them are on vacation, that's an excellent turnout. They also invited locums and any other doctor that they knew about in the area who might want to locum, so that was a recruitment tool as well.
Yep, and I'm just glad that it worked out so well, because we heard about it. So, thank you very much for this information. I see Susan quite often at meetings, so if there's anything else that comes up, we'll get right on it. So, thank you so much.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is by Joey O'Brien, the Managing Director of Mount Baldy, and he has a presentation, and I asked him to explain how he got to be so organized in this, he must have a good background on this, so can you?
Oh heavens, he's setting me up. It doesn't feel like that from this side. I was describing, imagine building your entire town in one hundred and seventy days, all of the infrastructure, all of the systems, all of the staff, all of the training. That's what we're doing. Yeah, okay, so here we go. Baldy, so you all know the forty-eight year history, it's been quite colorful over its time. Much like you guys are experts in your world, Baldy hasn't had the luxury of actually having a ski resort expert ever run it, so I'm hoping to be that person. We'll start with some background. So, Dad started building ski resorts fresh out of World War II in nineteen forty-seven. I grew up in that world, didn't know any better. He had a construction company, cable TV company, and so, I bought my first ski resort at age nineteen, and that was a half-million-dollar affair, so how do you get half-a-million dollars in debt at nineteen? That was a good trick. Twenty-five years later, sold that because I was absolutely bored at work, because our key people were all better at their jobs than I was, and so, I sold it to them. Came out to Canmore, Alberta for a year, fourteen years later, and yeah, it does that, doesn't it? Anyway, so in that time, I did everything from being Chief Operating Officer of Alpine, Canada, the National Ski Team, through to resurrecting a ski resort in Alberta, through to starting a green consulting and sustainability company that has just been going gangbusters. Two years ago, I saw that Baldy was being marketed by Gary Proznyak, and called him up and said, "I'll help you sell it." And there were a few fits and starts in that, as you're aware, but eventually, the deal came together, and I didn't intend on this, but I sort of came with the deal, because I have a great business back in Alberta. Anyway, next would be that, here's our ownership group. So, it's a group of people, except for myself, they're all Chinese-Canadians, and they, one of them, as an example, sold one of his companies in China for about three-point-four billion RU, or RH, whatever the initial is for Chinese currency, which is about eight-hundred million Canadian. And so, this is a debt-free enterprise, we came in with three-point-four M, and I'm spending about one M in a hundred and seventy days.
Yeah.
Trying hard not to waste it, trying to be efficient, trying to build systems and everything else, all that stuff. Anyways, so Baldy, what is Baldy? Savannah, do your thing. Here's our planned opening date, December first. People around here go, "What? Never, not even possible." And what's really funny for me is, of course, mature ski resorts regularly open on seventy-five centimeters of natural snow with good snowfarming techniques. And when I use that phrase with the locals, they go, "Oh," because they have no idea what I'm talking about. So, we intend on trying to do that. So, we will be ready to go December first, and hopefully, if there's seventy-five centimeters or more, that will also be our opening date. We are planning on having a first-tier festival, first, second, third, fourth, you guys will all get invited to that. We're going to go to April seventeenth, which is Easter Monday, and then, we're going to target summer programming to start on July first, so it will be a nine-to-ten-month-a-year operation. You have to do that in today's world, in the Alpine world, to get maximum utilization of the assets. Year number one, we know that we're going to have a minimum of appropriate infrastructure for summer operations, so we're going to try to do it as event-based, so that an event brings a quantity of people, because just flinging open our doors and saying, "Come one, come all," won't work. So, we get some snow. We get some snow. There's Matt plowing out the sprung structure, which is already five feet, the floor is five feet in the air, because it was in danger of collapsing, because it was completely covered with snow. We get some snow, which is one of the things that excites me about this business, having spent twenty-five years thirty feet above sea level on the Atlantic coast, where every storm was like a street mugging. Go ahead. So, this is what we're allowed to do. This is the two thousand and five permitted master plan. That's a fairly big footprint. That's a mini Whistler-esque, or Whistlerette, or whatever you want to call it. I don't ever anticipate that we're going to be quite that large, basically, eight thousand people, but the summer, who knows? There's an awful lot of tourists that roll through here in the summer, so we could support with an awful lot of activity. So, the good news is, we have a ceiling that we don't really have to push up against, and as we grow, I think we'll balance out at somewhere between three and four thousand guests per day, but that's just a gut, and that's based upon today. We all know what potential growth can happen. I've lived through Canmore in fourteen years, going from a pretty cool little community to they're now doing a million dollars a day in tourism receipts in that town. to they're now doing a million dollars a day in tourism receipts in that town. So that's a pretty striking number. Go ahead. So, I'm gonna point if I may. The current footprint is a strata or a group of homes, 103 homes right here. This lift, that lift, this lift, this lift. That's currently what is there. The master plan that we're gonna re-engineer doesn't have the village center right here because unfortunately, the strata sits in the middle of the best terrain heading towards it, so they jam us. So we're going to put the village center down here. That is the 2005 master plan. There are many parts of that we don't like and we're going to be changing this. One of them is a golf course. How do you compete with golf down here when you have 30 frost-free days up there? Yeah, I'm not gonna try. There's other things you can do at ski resorts that are far better. Go ahead. So, that's our existing and at build-out footprint, number of acres, vertical. So 2,300 vertical is bigger than Silver Star. So Baldy has been a very small ski resort, but it doesn't need to remain as a small ski resort. Silver Star, Big White, those are international tourism destinations. We can be that as well. We'll have to grow to it, but we can be that. Real estate. We are being overwhelmed with interest in real estate already. The phrase I use, "First dog on the bone seems to eat best," is what's happening. They're all approaching us, trying to be the first guy in, trying to sew up deals and things. We have an expert on our team that is working on that. He's got 30 years' experience. Seven or eight of it is with InterWest in the Blue Mountain area. So we've got a guy on our side guiding the process because that's not my core skill set. It's his. Mine is the Alpine Resort business. But this is what we have currently permitted within our footprint. It's a fairly large community. Imagine 8,000 people. Now, permitting process, this is actually kind of complicated because actually from the mountaintop this way, the permitting process is in this direction. And I think it's in Oliver, but I haven't figured it out yet. But from the mountaintop the other way, we're in the regional district of East Cooney. And we have a footprint that goes over both sides, which will make the permitting process entertaining, as I go through this. And the master plan's not appropriate for today's world, and so we're gonna redesign it. I've given myself two years to go through the redesign. And concurrently, I'm gonna be working at stabilizing the ski resort at a comfortable level of activity while concurrently doing the redesign so that in year three, we can begin our capital expansions. Go ahead. So, within our world, within the resorts branch, the all-season resorts policy that exists in BC, which by the way, is the best I've ever encountered in my industry. It took me seven years in Alberta to do what it took me 45 days in BC to do. Rarely do you get compliments for your permitting process. I know that, but I wanted to share that with you. It shocked me how quickly and easily we got something. So you fill, you build the capacity on the mountain first, you fill it with guests, you get permission to build an equivalent number of bed units. You have 1,200 capacity, you get 1,200 bed units. Simple math. And then you purchase the land, fee simple from the province, based upon a process. That's about between $5,000 and $12,000 an acre, based upon a whole series of metrics. So, how big? What is the market? What is the potential? So, please. We all know where we live. Go to the next one. There. So the US market goes between 55 and 64 million skier visits per year. It varies within that. The total number of active participants is actually growing, but the problem is, is that my generation used to ski 12.1 times a year. And the millennials ski 5.6. So it takes twice as many of you to make up for one of me. And us, we, my age, are all getting older, so we're dropping out of the sport. So the total number of active participants is growing with the population, but the skier traffic numbers haven't grown. The other issue we have in North America is there's virtually no new product. It's exceedingly difficult to open a ski resort anywhere in North America. And when opportunities like Baldy pop up, it's new product, effectively new product on the market. And that causes a jump in sales. It's a little bit of build it and they will come. Next one, Canada. Canada goes between 18 and 21 million skier visits. Again, the same issue. Our biggest challenge is central Canada. Do you know that 50% of the people who live in Toronto now were not born in Canada? That's an amazing number. And the majority of those people don't come from a Northern European heritage, where skiing and snow sport is part of their heritage background. And so the Canadian Ski Council and other associated entities are trying to introduce skiing to these people, sort of like be like a Canadian. But they're having to do it through the school system because that's the only way they can easily influence groups of them to come and learn how to ski and snowboard. So this, these are the critical metrics. And when I did my presentation to our investors four weeks ago, this is when all of them pulled out their cameras and went, "I think I'm gonna get measured by this one really effectively, or really strictly, next year." So 5,000 seasons passes. We're at 1,300 now. We'll hit 5,000 no problem. There's only 3,000 active skiers and snowboarders south of Penticton in this valley. What have we done? 10,000 seasons pass holders as a three-year target. I'm gonna explain NPS index in a moment. We're going for 8,000 trials a year, which is trying the sport or trying Baldy. We're looking for a conversion rate of 30% or better. The industry has an abysmal 18% conversion rate from try the sport to four times a year. 82% of the people who try this sport at most other ski resorts go, "No, thank you," and walk away. Imagine failing 82% of the time and still being alive. So dropout rates, we're gonna go for lots of people in once-a-week programs and we're gonna have 20,000 core customers within three years. By really focusing on attracting new people and keeping them, converting them to core. Net promoter score, if you're not familiar with it, you've probably partaken in it many times. It's a survey tool that somebody says, "How much do you love us?" 1 through 10. So 9, 10 are fictionados, 7, 8 are neutral, 6 and below are detractors because we're nice Canadians and we'd never give anybody below 5 unless we're really pissed off. And so that's been in place for more than 20 years in the ski industry. We use it as our bible. We use it as our, almost our rudder as well. Go ahead. So here's a typical NPS resort for the ski industry. The red line is how much do you love skiing and snowboarding? The blue line is how much do you love the resort you're at today? So you can see Ontario, with their smaller resorts, less snow, are less loved than BC, where we have better snow, bigger mountains. And we have all this wonderful math behind this that I won't bother boring you with, but let's just say we analyze the hell out of it. We have more industry knowledge and stats available to us to help guide our individual strategies than any industry I've ever worked in. Notice beginner to core, the green is 18%? That's horrible. That's because most ski resorts don't see the snow school as their absolute genesis of their total growth and their genesis of their total active population. Go ahead. Here's our historic traffic. So Baldy has never focused on growing. I want to describe the layer cake of the ski business. Most people think it's just the icing, which is Family Day weekend and March break and Christmas break and fresh snowfall. We call that icing. The layers in the layer cake are the school group programs and boy scouts coming out and ski race teams on weekdays, and, 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 and. You build the layer of the layer cake so that it completely covers your costs of operations and the icing is your profit. They've only looked at icing. So that's why those numbers are like that. They've never focused on actually building the book of business that's necessary to succeed in this business. The numbers are abysmal. Number of operating days, one of their challenges they've always had is they go, "We're not gonna make a lot of money on this." So rather than going to getting new clients, they actually closed. It doesn't quite work in this industry. Go ahead. So here's some regional market numbers. So there's about 1.5 million skier days annually in this greater valley, from Sun Peaks down. And we're looking at a relatively small number of those. Those are very doable numbers. And again, because we're a debt-free entity, I can take the time to focus on growing the market and growing our numbers. The good news, you know, 1,300 seasons passed. They're all waiting. You know what's really funny is my background, one of the things I have is, I guess I'm, out west, I think we call it a power engineer, in the east, you call it an industrial engineer. One of the tickets I have. My first job in the ski industry for Dad was rebuilding a condemned ski lift. Condemned means take it down, throw it away. It still runs today. Ski lifts are the simplest devices in the world, but in the past, they have marketed Baldy as having this tremendous challenge of, "We can't get the eagle chair going." So there's an awful lot of people that are waiting for us to finish the certification process on it this year, which will happen on October 22nd, 21st and 22nd, before they buy their pass because they just don't believe it can happen. We're okay with that. We're not using, we're not doing the ski resort version of a Ponzi scheme, which is, we're not taking the seasons pass money, which is for a product that we haven't yet confirmed we can deliver, to then create the product. All of the money that's coming in from seasons passes is sitting in a separate account that we're not touching until we complete all of the preparations. So here's some nice, beautiful before-and-after pictures, like, wow. Here's some interior shots of what we came across. By the way, on that floor right there, if I stood here and went like this, you'd move up and down. So we ripped out the 30-year-old carpet, we're putting new plywood down, new carpet and all that stuff, and repainting everything. The electricians had great fun in there. They went in to do a minor project and three weeks later walked out. We saw wires hanging together with marets just holding them in the air. We saw one spot where they had neutralized, sorry, electrified the neutral, which means you could get electrocuted anywhere. 48 years of just good volunteers doing their best.
That's right. Some of us have been there.
It has slightly better colors now. It's a little bit better. It's still not a beautiful building. I'll go back if you would. Okay, don't send anybody after me on this one, alright? In BC, I'll raise the picture just a bit. In BC, the riparian setback from streams is 15 meters minimum, right? It's part of that history we come across. We're like, "Well, I guess we're gonna live in this for two years and then we're gonna move."
Put a water feature in the floor.
Yeah. Well, sometimes the water feature comes in if we don't do a good enough cleaning. There's staff housing. Yeah, I walked in, went, "Ooh, God." So we keep going. We sort of made it look a little better. Gave it a bit of some new furniture. It's basic bit of staff housing. We gave the building some lipstick. That's, for instance, the barbecue pit when we arrived, what it looked like as an example. And that's what it looks like today. So we're just, we're trying to get basic functionality in all of the elements of the business. That's the after-picture of after. All of the bushes were two meters high on 750 acres. And so that's what it looks like today. We have one real estate development that we're gonna slowly be moving forward on. We've got 34 lots. Three of them are multifamily, the rest of them are single-family. That's one of the legacies we purchased, was a paved subdivision. So we're gonna be slowly moving ahead on that. But I'm not really developing anything else until I complete the redesign of the master plan because I don't wanna get stuck. And just for your own knowledge, real estate sales, you see 21 units in 2007 and then they hit the wall, like so many did. And that's why the ski resort failed, was that they were a real estate company that happened to have a ski hill. And I remember in 2008, sitting at a ski council meeting amongst the Whistlers and the Silver Stars and the Big Whites and everybody else in a row, and the president of Vail and president of InterWest looked at all of us and said, "Boys, the party's over. Focus on your core product, skiing. Focus on your knitting. Because we don't know if we're ever coming back to the party that existed. We just don't know." And we all know the history and that almost decades since then. Yeah, we've got some legacies here. There's a 16-plex foundation as a legacy that we came across. Turns out, we can actually revive that and we're trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. Keep going. That reasonably good-looking facility, except it was designed for the valley bottom, not 25 to 35 feet of snow. So we need to re-engineer how the snow shedding is done on that. Okay, so, that's one. I wanna segue, but it's gonna link together. What did I leave in Alberta? I left a company called Sustained Riven, which is a green consulting firm. So we install energy from waste, very small-scale ones. We teach waste commissions how to have waste with no, how to have a waste commission with no waste, yet all the money, how to basically repurpose everything. We do greenhouse gas analysis and greenhouse credits. And for instance, we're bidding for the Kinder Morgan Pipeline GHT footprint. And we take events and make them the greenest in the world, such as, let's say, the Bath Marathon, where we turned it into the greenest marathon in the world with 99.4% waste diversion on 7,000 people. 7,000 people, 7,000 pounds of waste, and the total amount of waste that went to the dump was a small bag this big. So that's some of what the other company does. So what Victor loves about this is China, as we know, has done a pretty nasty job of ruining their environment. They're now getting significant social events wrapped around their event. He wants me to also integrate that, and I really want to, with the growth in Baldy. I want to create an energy-positive microgrid to start with there. And then all the other elements of sustainability, I want to integrate within the master plan. And he thinks that we can export that knowledge to China as well, using this as a footprint. So I was like, "Cool. Okay, now you've really got me." So there's a bunch of reasons why I'm here. That's just one of them.
Very interesting.
Well, thank you very much. You've certainly got the right energy to put this forward. Carol and I've been here for a million years, so we know that, haven't we, Carol? We know that Baldy was basically a group of local residents who decided, "We're gonna use this." There was something else before then, but it was families that went up there and built houses. I know because I helped build one of the log cabins that was up there. And they sort of pulled it together. So it was a family-run resort, which is why it's not done to the level that that you're used to. But can I suggest that, I know you're opening on May, you said December 1st. December 2nd and 3rd is Christmas Light Up in Asouis. And on December the 2nd, we have a Santa Claus parade at 6:30 at night downtown Asouis. And I would suggest that you get a float or a car and, because lots of people attend that. And then there's a breakfast at Smithy's that morning. There's a, something at the Legion. Yeah, and the Sonora. So it's a big weekend.
Is DO running it or one of your people?
No, it's the Asouis Festival Society.
Got it.
And so, and I'm a member, have been forever, so please, you'll see something come out about it very soon because we have a meeting tonight. But I would suggest that would be a good advertisement for you if you are interested in doing that. It's a fun event, too.
Yep. While we're integrating as best we can with the community and the various events that are happening.
Sure.
We have to create a new brand.
No, good. Mr. Manko?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just wondering more about your summer season plans. Are you looking at cross-country mountain biking, downhill mountain biking, taking people up so they can hike, hike up there? Is that, is that part of the?
You've hit about two of the 20 possibilities. The, actually, the investment in summer activities at ski resorts is the single, single's largest area of investment that's occurring presently in this industry. As we all realize, I mean, even Big White, this was their first year ever offering summer operations, if you can imagine. The answer is, I don't know. The answer is, we have a long shopping list of what we're preparing to do. So if I back up just a little bit, I mentioned that 170 days. Well, for the first 60 or 70 days, I absolutely, with the team, focused on core deliverables. Could we guarantee lifts and trails and snow and buildings that we could actually occupy and the basics? We're now close enough to the finish line on all that stuff that we now are lifting our head. And for about 10 days, we've been building, building that book of business, going after all those pieces. So I'm 10 days into the larger question that you've asked. So we're trying to move quickly, but it's not priority one, it's sort of priority two. However, as I mentioned to Mike earlier, Victor, who essentially is my partner, he, he's corralling the cats. Like two of the people, the investors, he called up in Vancouver and said, "You're going to give me half a million dollars for this project." And they said, "Okay." Good. My favorite guy. And he said, "Okay, I want you to run a marathon this weekend or next weekend because this is a seven-day nationwide vacation in China." And to enter the Beijing Marathon is 50,000. And to enter the Beijing Marathon is fifty thousand dollars, and you need to know someone. So he said, I want you to organize a marathon for five to six hundred Chinese to come in this week, for this whole week next year. And we'll organize a whole series of activities and events that they will do, including participating in a marathon, including activities at Baldi, including visiting Area Twenty-Seven, and all those other things, and wineries, et cetera. And he wants us to organize that for next year. So we're like, ooh, okay, that kind of makes sense. And his thought, of course, is anybody who can afford fifty thousand dollars for a marathon meets the profile that we're looking for for foreign investment. And he wants to then bring those people in for investment opportunities in this region. So we have many balls in the air. And we're trying to not, some of us are old enough. Do you guys remember the Ed Sullivan Show? Okay, do you remember the plate spinner?
I don't know what he's talking about.
The plate spinner, the guy that would spin plates with a chopstick and try to get ten and twelve of them going, well, I'm a plate spinner right now. And trying not to let any of them fall.
Well, we certainly appreciate your energy and your vision on this, and we, we wish you all the best. Seems to me, I heard last week in Vancouver, that Whistler, their summer traffic and summer programs are now bigger than their winter ones, which is pretty amazing, yeah. So you know what? We're certainly supportive of your efforts and we wish you, we wish you all the best. And please keep us informed as to what's going on and what we can publicize for you, and come in the parade.
I'll leave you with one last item. I handed out the rack card, right? People are going, what are you doing? Look at the rates. So we want, as an example, a thousand seniors involved in skiing. Now, seniors are my favorite guests, in that they arrive, they take only three to five runs a day. They only ski on weekdays for the most part, although they can come with their grandkids anytime. So in order to grow the market from three thousand to twenty thousand guests or participants, I have to reduce barriers to entry. How's that for a reduction to a barrier to entry? It's essentially free, because I'd rather have five hundred people buying lunch than fifty. We have to grow our market. So everything you can do to help us find opportunities to grow the market locally, we will pursue.
Well, you just have, because it's on Granica, so everybody can watch this on their, on their computer. Well, thank you very much. Please keep us informed of any upcoming events and whatever you're, you're up to next.
I love fundraising events and events like that. My resort in the east, I had about a hundred and fifteen special events per winter.
Well, we're not doing them all.
Not at all. But we've already talked about one event that's gonna raise money for Spirit of the Game, using Area Twenty-Seven, using Victor's contacts from Vancouver, plus locally, to raise money for Spirit of the Game. We're pursuing those opportunities to create events up at the mountain that draws traffic for us, but also creates a good brand for us within the valley. So that's an example. Come to me with more.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next presentation is from the school, the We Day presentation. And Mr. Bayless is here, and I believe he has Alicia, is that correct? And Bianca? McKenna? And Puniet? Okay, please come and, I think you came last year, Mr. Bayless, with, I assume, some other students, so, all right.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor McCord. Good morning, Mayor McCord of Town Councilors. My name is Alicia. We thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you this morning. With me is McKenna, Bianca, Puniet and Mr. Bayless.
Good mor, good morning, Mayor McCord, whoops. Good morning, my name is Bianca. We are all very proud to stand here as representatives of a group of students at Assouias Elementary, who are very committed to affecting positive changes in both our local and global communities. We are also part of a group of students who hope to attend We Day in Vancouver on November third. We understand you may have seen a similar video last year, when another group of students asked for your support. But we would like to show you this video to remind you what We Day is all about. Please watch this video.
There is no room like this room anywhere on the planet.
We Day is more than a one-day event. It launches a year-long series of actions to better our global community. And we made that commitment today.
Look around you. There are thousands of parties right here, right now.
We are united, we are strong, we are breakable, and we are unstoppable, because that is the power of We.
I stand here in front of you as living proof that we can redefine what is possible.
You can all work together to make the world a better place for everybody. We all must do it together.
I know that there's someone out here in this audience who's being bullied, but I know that they need someone who's able to.
Please stay true to yourself. Please, just remain who you are and know that we have each other's back.
I know we all have some weaknesses, but it does not mean that we don't deserve to be special.
We Day is all of you, the few that dedicated, coming together to change this world.
Some people don't think it's cool to help others. Personally, I think it's the coolest thing in the world.
So keep doing what you're doing, be leaders, not followers. Together, we can all change the world.
We Day is incredible.
We Day was powerful and never experienced anything like this before.
Wait, it's so long, like, I'm so in-haptured, I can't even describe it to you. I'm so excited to get started.
My name is McKenna. One year ago, a few of our classmates came and spoke to you about We Day. They requested that you financially support our efforts to go to We Day, to lead into a year of students taking positive initiative in our school, our town, and our world, to make positive changes. As we heard Craig Kelburger saying the video, We Day is not a one-day event, it's a year-long commitment to taking positive action. We speak to you today as students ready to make that same commitment, as well as on behalf of many others, ready to make that same commitment.
Last year, with the help of your generous support, a group of Assouias Elementary students did go to We Day. They had an amazing experience and came back inspired. They came back not only inspired to undertake positive projects, but they came back prepared and excited to inspire others, including the four of us. As we speak to you today, we do not, we do not know if we are students that will be selected to go to We Day, but we are prepared to, we are prepared to either go, go and come back to inspire others, or to see others go and be inspired by them.
After the students came back last year, a number of positive projects were undertaken. Many students contributed, contributed towards the school-wide initiative to recycle batteries. As We Day partnered with a company that provided essential sink tablets to children in developing countries. For each battery recyc, for each battery recycled, we, we were able to collect and recycle close to a thousand batteries. It feels empowering to know that our efforts save lives, children that we will never know.
There were also fundraising and awareness campaigns run by students groups and individuals in support of Children's Hospital in Vancouver, the Assouias Food Bank, facilities for our own school, the SPCA, anti-bullying, and the South Okanagan Women's Shelter. We also had several students who got involved with rallies and activities around saving our high school. It is good to know that through our contributions to the positive actions of our community, that our high school will be there for us.
Through these events, the students of Assouias Elementary have come to see a larger worldview and understand that through our actions, we can affect change in our world.
It is rewarding to look back and see all our school community has done. But today, we are marked by about looking forward. As a group, we are strongly committed to being actively involved in positive action toward our local and global communities. We have been inspired not only by the Me to We philosophy, but we have been inspired by our older schoolmates who have gone before us. Now that we are the, some of the older students in our school, we eagerly take on the responsibility of providing leadership to our younger schoolmates and teaching them the power they have to affect positive change in their local and global communities.
Even though we have plans, part of the excitement of the year will be discovering new passions that will inspire us and our schoolmates.
We have two requests of Town Council today. We are respectfully asking for your financial support to assist our families and school with the costs of the We Day trip, for our school group with the expenses of accommodation, transportation, and the food. The We Day trip is quite costly. The hope that you could provide with these expenses would be very helpful and much appreciated.
Also, we are requesting use of the town bus for November second and third. Last year, Town Council was generous enough to grant use of the bus for the We Day trip. By using the town bus, the We Day trip organizers were able to avoid booking a big yellow bus through the school district. Use the bus has two primary benefits. First, it greatly reduces the cost for our We Day trip organizers. The big yellow bus has several costs of its own associated with it, so the smaller town bus allows us to avoid those costs.
Also, the smaller, okay, also, the smaller bus allows us to significantly reduce the carbon footprint of our trip. The big yellow bus that can carry more than seventy students is very wasteful for our group of thirteen students and three chaperones. We also feel that as a group who promotes social responsibility, we want to be able to demonstrate social responsibility with our transportation. We would appreciate very much if Town Council would, would grant us the, would grant us use of the bus for two days of the trip. Thank you for your consideration of our requests.
Well, thank you to all of you. You've done an amazing job of presenting what, what your, your asks are. You were very clear, you're very committed. Before I turn it over, can I ask, how many people from your school would you send to this? Or does that, and how do you decide who has the opportunity to attend?
Yeah, I'll take that question. We, this year, we got sixteen tickets. In the past, we've got twenty-two tickets. And my understanding is that we just got fewer tickets this year, because there's, as We Day is growing throughout the province, there's just simply more schools wanting to go. And of course, Rogers Centre doesn't grow, so they've reduced the number of tickets that each school is getting, so they can accommodate more schools. So as of right now, we have sixteen tickets, so there'll be thirteen students and three chaperones. But we have requested to have a few more tickets. We haven't got word on that yet. I don't know that we necessarily will. But of course, our fingers are crossed.
And how, how do you decide which children go?
The children that want to go. Because we have fewer tickets this year, we've limited it to grade sixes and sevens. In the past, we've taken some younger students as well. The idea of the younger students was that they're sort of mentored by the sixes and sevens, and then, as these students discussed, as they come up, now they become the mentors for the younger ones. For this year, we've limited to grade six and sevens. The six and seven students, grade six and seven students that are interested in going, have needed to make an application. And the application process is a form that they fill out. And on that form, there's three questions. The first question is, what are some social responsibility projects you've undertaken in the past? Second question is, what are some social responsibility projects you are planning on or would like to, or are interested in undertaking? And the third question is, what is it you think that you would gain out of the We Day experience? So these students have filled out those forms, as well as several others. Those forms are actually due to me today. So the selection process has not been completed yet, so as, again, these students mentioned, they don't know right now whether or not they're going to be students that are selected to go. This probably strengthens their case, being here, doing this.
Of course.
But, yeah, it's not a guarantee, because in the past, for, even when we've had twenty-two tickets, so that's nineteen students going, we've had over, regularly over fifty kids applying.
Good.
So it, it does put us in a position of having to make some, some tough choices. And frankly, there have been some disappointed kids, because obviously, they would like to go. But to their credit, even those disappointed kids see that as an opportunity to really commit themselves to projects through the year to really strengthen their case for the following year.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Campbell and Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you. First of all, amazing job, all of you, standing up here today. As Mr. Bayless knows, I'm, I'm a fan of the, of the event itself. Both my kids have attended, and last year, I had the pleasure of attending as well. And I only wish I had, I had been part of something like that when I was your age, so it was, it was pretty inspiring and pretty incredible. You know, as with my feeling with organized sports and Spirit of the Game, I think it's involvement and, and being part of something like this that is core to building future leaders for our communities and other communities. So well done for, for standing up here today and presenting, and I wish you guys luck, and hopefully, you'll be the ones that get to go. But thank you.
If I could reply to Mr. Campbell, this, this year would be our fifth year going. And I think through the course of those five years, what Mr. Campbell is talking about is exactly what we see happening in our schools, that in the first year, maybe two, is sort of a bit of a curiosity, but we're now at a stage where I feel like we've significantly changed the culture of our school. Towards leadership, towards service to others. Many of you may know that the, we're operating under a new curriculum in the school this year. And there's a lot in the new curriculum regarding community, being a part of your community, contributions to your community, making a link, a connection between the school and the greater community. Both your local community, your national community, the global community. So that's in our curriculum, and I like to think that, I'm very proud of our school, because I feel like we're ahead of the curve.
I agree. I agree totally.
Sometimes it's just, it's a spark that, that gets kids going. And I mean, my, my son was attending the We Day camps in Ontario for the last couple of years because of having the opportunity through the elementary school to attend it here, so.
Good. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. My happiest moments on council are when I get the agendas and I see that there's gonna be youth from our community coming to appear in front of council. We get our agendas on the previous Thursday, so we have an opportunity. Somehow, when I see these items on our agendas, every Somehow, when I see these items on our agendas, everything else becomes less important at that point. Great job. It's hard to stand up in front of a microphone for everybody. To speak clearly is something that's a challenge for most people. You guys did an awesome job. Thank you very much. Um, I've said it dozens of times before, if the future of our community is in your hands, how lucky are we? Uh, Richard, thank you again. I know this is, uh, somewhat of a repeat from last year, but how you energize these people to come up here is something that you should be very proud of, and thank you very much for doing it again this year.
Thank you. I am very proud of that.
Uh, Councilor King?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank you very much for the great presentation, and I guess it would be, wanting to know if the bus is available those two days would be great to find out because I definitely would support you using the bus. And, uh, I think the bus maxes out, so I don't know if more is better or someone takes a car, but there is a magic number to that bus of twenty or twenty-two if you used it last year, so.
Yes, we, uh, with our ticket allotment last year, which was a little more than this year, we filled the bus, but we didn't have to.
Oh, excellent, okay. Okay. Thanks. I just have one question. You just tell me what grade the children are in?
Uh, grade seven, grade six, grade seven, grade seven.
Excellent. Great job.
Good. Uh, Councilor Youngberg?
Congratulations, all of you. What a wonderful job you did. I was in Toastmasters for a year, and you'd all, um, probably have to, um, evaluate me. So you did a great job. I certainly will, um, uh, support the use of the bus as well. Do you think, um, Richard, there would ever be possibilities to regionalize a We conference? So for an example, you know, one in Kelowna, one up north, so that more, uh, students were able to join in to such an unbelievable experience? Do you ever see that happening, or has that ever been discussed, or?
Uh, in the five years that we've been going to We Day, each year, they have added more stops on their tour. Uh, it does tend to be bigger cities and with, you know, great big hockey-type Rogers Arena arenas. Whether they would go smaller, I, I don't know. I'd love to see it as well. I'd love to be able to, uh, take a group to Kelowna would be much more feasible, but, but that's obviously something that would be out of my hands, but I'd love to, love to see that.
Yeah, if there's any input, it would be good. Our new event centers in all the areas now would be great facilities. But good job, good luck to all of you.
Uh, Mr. Remanco, did you have something to say?
Yes, I just need some clarity on a few, uh, points relative to the request. Uh, first of all, what are your timeframes?
Uh, well, fairly short. Uh, I mean, the, the We Day trip is on November third, so I'm in the process right now of making, of preparing the application to the school district.
Sorry, I should be speaking to the mic. And that application for a, a field trip of this type does require me to fill in a breakdown of, of, uh, budgeting. So the money we've got coming in, the money we're, what we're going to spend it on, uh, you know, how much is going to accommodation, how much is going to transportation, how much is going to food? So, uh, I guess the answer to your question is respectfully, the sooner the better.
Okay, and the second, uh, there was a request for funding for accommodation and, uh, food and that type of support, unless I missed it, was there a specific ask amount?
Uh, the ask, uh, no, they did not ask for a specific amount. Uh, I agree, it would be that too, council decide what you would choose to do. Having said that, last year, the, what the students that came and spoke asked for five hundred, uh, then what council did was decided to give one thousand.
And so do you know which days the bus is needed? Is it just the second and the third, or is it, do you meet, are you coming back on the fourth?
No, we'll be coming back on the third. So what happened last year, uh, Ryan Miller, teacher at the school, is the, uh, would be the driver of the bus who has the appropriate driver's license. Uh, he picked the bus up on the morning of our departure.
Yeah.
We went that, uh, left that morning, went to Vancouver. The next day, we went to We Day. When We Day was done, we boarded the bus, came back that evening, and so we were back into Assouis about ten PM, and then Mr. Miller went and returned the bus.
Perfect. Good.
First thing the following morning.
Okay, so given that the specific ask is for as soon as possible, could I get a, a resolution from council that this be put on the agenda for decision this afternoon?
So moved.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, uh, Richard, out of the, um, ask.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry. Out of the ask is the, um, are the expenses for the bus taken out of that, or do we pay the expenses of the bus and the bus and give you a thousand? How does that work? Well, gas is a big deal.
Yes, it is. So last year, what happened was, uh, council, uh, granted us a thousand dollars plus use of the bus. Uh, the bus had a full tank, and we left it with a full tank, so we paid for the gas. But, I mean, that's what happened last year, but whatever council decides to do this year is what council decides.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, we will have a, uh, something for this afternoon's meeting that we can?
We'll, we'll add it to this afternoon's agenda.
We'll add it to the agenda. So the resolution is to add this to the agenda this afternoon, all in favor? Thank you very much. So, uh, we will get back to you as soon as, uh, decision is made at our formal meeting this afternoon, okay? Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, business number one, an application for comprehensive development at four-two-one-seven Lake Shore Drive. Would that be, oh, Ms. Wong?
Sorry, Selena.
Mr. Cunningham, you're going to present this?
I am.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chris Meradian and Tyler Smith. And sorry for, for the delay, but glad that you're here. Uh, Chris Meradian has applied as agent for, uh, Richard Carglin of West Vancouver to obtain OCP and zoning bylaw amendments for four-two-one-seven Lake Shore Drive to enable its comprehensive residential development, along with a small amount of commercial space. Mr. Meradian previously presented an overview of his proposed development to council on April eighteenth earlier this year. At this council meeting, council are given the opportunity to review three attached bylaw amendments for four-two-one-seven Lake Shore Drive before considering them for first and second readings at the regular meeting on October seventeenth to sixteen. First, official community plan amendment bylaw number one-two-three-zero-point-one-sixteen-two-sixteen for changing the land use designation from tourist commercial DC to comprehensive development CD. Uh, next, zoning amendment bylaw, uh, number one-oh-eight-five-point-nine-six-two-sixteen to create a CD nine comprehensive development zone. And then lastly, zoning amendment bylaw number one-hundred-and-eighty-five-point-one-oh-one-two-sixteen to add definitions for a resort secondary dwelling and a resort two-family dwelling. The subject property is an irregular-shaped fourteen-point-two-acre or five-point-seven-hectare lot situated on the east side of Lake Shore Drive opposite Walnut Beach Resort. It lies within the town's urban growth boundary, UGB, but is presently unused. Previous uses included, uh, growing, growing vegetables in the early nineteen-sixties and a knuckle orchard in the late nineteen-seventies, followed by a par-three golf course in the early nineteen-nineties. The property contains a level area with standing water along Lake Shore Drive, and behind that, it slopes up to the town's eastern boundary with gradients ranging between ten to twenty percent. Attached to this report are phase develop, a phase development plan, which is part of the zoning amendment bylaw, and a photo illustration showing two four-story buildings at the base, and mixed ground entry housing rising up the rear slope. Buildout will be undertaken in seven phases over several years. The types, quantity, and sequencing of housing are shown on the phase development plan and repeated on the following table for council's convenience. The developer and staff have collaborated closely to finalize the building plan shown on the table, which compared with previous versions increases certainty by reducing building options and balancing the respective shares of residential and tourist units. Total buildout of the property will include two-hundred-and-thirty-four through to two-seventy-four dwelling units, of which eighty-eight single-family dwellings and terraced townhomes will be reserved for resident owner occupation or long-term residential leasing. The remainder will be made up of one-hundred-and-forty to one-hundred-and-sixty-four resort dwellings that can be rented out for tourists, presumably including, uh, Chinese skiers, uh, including, and, uh, including resorts, secondary dwellings, and single-family dwellings, resort two-family dwellings, and resort multiple-family dwellings in terraced townhouse and apartment formats. Some commercial space may be included on the ground floors of the apartment buildings, depending on the market. To avoid unfair competition with our hotel motel industry, the resort units will be restricted to minimum stays of one week and will have to be part of a strata operated by a licensed strata council in accordance with an approved rental, uh, pool scheme, along with provincially required guest registration, payment of room taxes, and applicable municipal bylaws. Our zoning bylaw already includes such requirements in its definition of a resort multiple family, but a companion amendment bylaw is required to add similar definitions for our resort secondary dwelling and a resort two-family dwelling. Because of enforcement problems that we have experienced keeping short-term rentals out of dwellings supposedly reserved for regular home occupation, which will be exacerbated by the growth of online rental companies like Airbnb, we will seek legal advice prior to the public hearing on how best to enforce restrictions, such as two housing agreements and covenants. The mixed residential tourist accommodation and commercial uses proposed for four-two-one-seven Lake Shore fit well with surrounding developments in the area. These include the Sonora Ridge Estates and Chardonnay Court, single-family residential suburbs boarding on the subject property's southern boundary, and Walton's RV Park south of Thirty-Sixth Avenue. Walton's Beach Resort on the west side of Lake Shore Drive contains a mix of hotel rooms and residential and resort multiple-family dwellings. Village on the lake to the north is a multiple-family residential development. Mr. Meradian has practiced due diligence by, uh, supporting his application with the following detail in thorough background reports, all of which are accessible in the town, uh, on the town website and reports. First is an environmental site assessment, second is a geotechnical assessment, and third is a servicing design report. All reports have been reviewed by staff and conditioned by true for servicing issues. The environmental assessment concluded that no unsafe chemical residues remain from past agricultural uses of the property. The geotechnical assessment evaluated the suitability of the site for development and the presence and extent of any geotechnical constraints. After extensive field and lab testing, no concerns were identified with slope stability, but many construction safeguards were recom, were recommended for managing, pardon me, the property's extensive surface and groundwater conditions. These recommendations were taken into consideration in the servicing design report, which after further review by True was modified so that all systems for stormwater, roads and sidewalks, and sewer water will meet town quality standards and will safeguard us from any owner's obligations for undue maintenance and premature repairs and replacement. And Director, and then Mitty was part of that process. One important, uh, feature of the applicant's proposed stormwater management plan is to use the two small ponds, ponds in the level area between the two apartment blocks for storm attend, water attenuation and purification before discharging into Assouis Lake through a pipe under Lake Shore Drive. The pond surrounds will be carefully landscaped to enhance ecological benefits and recreational values. The applicant will gift the whole area as a public amenity for parkland, site area yet to be determined, which will be accessible both from within the property and adjoining public sidewalk the applicant will construct along the eastern side of Lake Shore Drive right away. The applicant is also working with staff on the possibility of the organic dock for use of their patrons to be accessed through the town's lakeside sewage lift station property north of Walnut Beach. The proposed development could generate considerable traffic. According to the applicant, will commission a traffic impact study with terms of reference from consultant selection satisfactory to the town, which may identify needed improvements to the local street system and any cost sharing. To contain the applicant's front-end costs, this impact study is not required until before the public hearing. Referring to the attached bylaw for the CD nine comprehensive development zone, it can be seen that staff also propose an innovative zoning approach to contain front-end costs. Instead of the common practice of requiring the applicant to provide full details on all aspects of their proposed development upfront, in this case, they can, can, pardon me, fulfill part of their submission requirements by successively applying for individual development up, uh, permits prior to commencement of each phase. Options, council reviews the submission. Option two, council suggests some changes to the submission or require additional information. Impacts, uh, community will bring a currently unused property and a full productive fees for housing, uh, community residents, attracting newcomers into town and contributing to tourism development. Organizational considerable, uh, cunning workload for applying development services and true engineering. Budget will generate considerable town revenues from property taxes, DCCs, service connections, and development and building permit fees. Significant dates, applicant wishes to start building next year. Sustainability will promote economic, social, environmental sustainability by adding to our economic base, diversifying housing choices, developing at relatively high densities, encouraging sensitive environmental design, and adding to our park system. Request for directions, staff seeks council direction on suggesting any changes to the submission or requiring additional information, but without prejudicing their legislative discretion to make a determination on first and second readings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, well, certainly some of the issues that we had, um, were, were concerned about have been identified, and, uh, they seem to have been addressed appropriately, and I think that if you are feeling comfortable with this, Mr. Cunningham, and True is as well, so we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any? Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Just for clarity, the traffic, uh, study slash evaluation for that, uh, you indicated that it's not required until just before the public hearing? I have a few concerns about that. Not profound concerns, but, um, the, the final buildout is definitely going to increase the population of that particular area down there, and with population comes vehicles and other modes of transportation. Is there a process to maybe speed that up to find out what the impact that's going to be? Not that it really has any bearing on the final, uh, uh, buildout on it, but it's certainly valuable information to see, you know, if there might be any pitfalls that need to be worked on. And leaving it till just before, so my point is, is leaving it just before the, the public hearing leaves me with some concerns, and I think it would be very valuable to know some of those pitfalls, if there are any.
I fully understand your concerns, but, um, my expectation is that the results of, of the traffic, uh, impact study would not bear directly on the viability of the project itself, which would be a concern for council when they're considering first and second readings, uh, but would more, uh, have application in terms of the mitigating measures that would have to be taken off-site to accommodate the traffic, whether that would be, uh, improvements to Lake Shore Drive itself, or maybe improvements to highway intersections. I, I hope that answers your, your, your concerns.
Is there a possibility of speeding that up a little bit prior to just before the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we, we would, we would certainly get it as quickly as possible. Um, intent, as I mentioned, was to, uh, reduce the front-end law, uh, end, uh, costs for the developer, and obviously, is in, incurring huge expenses in terms of consulting, but, uh, we wouldn't withhold it any longer than would need be. Um, as soon as, uh, first and, uh, second readings were, were completed in two weeks' time, uh, I would expect that we'd sit down, uh, with the developers and, uh, with their engineer, who's not here right now, Terry Underwood.
now, Terry Underwood, and just work out and agree on what would be the terms of reference for such a study, and the selection process for the consultant, because that has to be agreeable to ourselves, and we might as well get started on that right away. And as soon as we receive the study, no matter what the time difference might be in terms of the public hearing, I would pass on the results of that study to council itself, either informally or by a special meeting.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, and I'm glad that Counselor Rhodes brought it up. We have so many people that write to us, call us, because of not only the traffic patterns down that road, but the speed limit. And we've had many, you know, concerns with, you know, there's the people that want it to thirty kilometers an hour all the time, and there's the ones that say it's fine at fifty, and so I think that, you know, that there definitely will be some feedback from many of the residents that live up there, because that's a huge concern of theirs. So when do you see the public hearing on this? Would it be not anytime soon, or would it be next year?
It could be later this year, but it's obviously sometime out, because we have to get the traffic impact study completed.
Yes.
And there would have to be some discussion on that at the staff level in terms of taking certain recommendations through the council. For instance, if there was identification for certain mitigating works, there could be a prioritized list of those. We'd want to sit down with council and find out which ones were the most important ones, put some timelines on that, and put some cost sharing between the town and the developer.
Okay.
So all of that is going to take some considerable time, so when you say perhaps it could occur in the new year, that's not unrealistic. I would prefer that we keep moving ahead as quickly as possible, but the point's well taken.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Yeah, I'd make a motion. Can we move this to this afternoon? Too fast? Next week? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. So, anyone else?
You need a motion for that?
No.
Bring it up.
Just for, yeah. Anyone else have anything to talk? Okay. Well, thank you very much for attending and listening to all of our other concerns at council, and thank you for dealing with some of these issues right away. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the animal control and licensing bylaw. Ms. Van Veenem.
Thank you. Staff brought a first draft of new animal control and licensing bylaw number thirteen sixteen to the committee of the whole meeting of December seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Council directed changes be made, and it is now being brought forward for further review. Currently, the town has a dog control and licensing bylaw and a cat control bylaw. We currently do not have any other bylaws regulating other animals. The attached bylaw amalgamates the dog and cat bylaws and also addresses chickens and other farm animals and exotic animals. At the December seventh committee meeting, council requested staff remove reference to prohibited breeds of dogs and instead work with regulating them instead. This has been done in this new draft. The proposed new bylaw does, however, list certain dogs as restricted, as we have continually had difficulties, especially with dog attacks, by specific breeds, and they appear to be on the increase over the past two years. A restricted dog is covered under paragraph thirty-seven six, which requires that a restricted dog, while the dog is anywhere else other than onlands or premises owned or occupied by the dog owner, keep the dog muzzled to prevent it from biting another animal or human. This is the same wording as in the previous bylaw, and it is recommended that it remain in the new bylaw to mitigate future attacks. The list of wild, exotic, and prohibited animals on Schedule B was researched by staff by reviewing various bylaws within BC and other provinces. The list in Schedule B is based on the BCSPCA list of prohibited animals and is similar to that provided in the RDOS prohibited animals bylaw. The new bylaw was drafted using a table of contents for ease of referencing certain sections. It also contains a map showing where dogs are permitted in parks. The options being presented are that animal control and licensing bylaw thirteen sixteen two thousand and sixteen be forwarded to regular meeting of council, or that it be returned to staff for further changes. Staff is recommending option one, however, before sending it for three readings in a regular meeting, staff will have the bylaw vetted by legal counsel to ensure it can be enforced in the courts. And just further to my report, I was able to get some stats from the bylaw officer, and there between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen, we had nineteen dog attacks. Of those, two were German shepherds, one was a mixed breed, three were bow mastiffs, one was a boxer, one was an airdale, two were border collies, and nine were pit bull or pit bull crosses.
Good. Thank you very much. As, just as an aside, last week at UBCM, one of the resolutions that did pass was that there would be a registry of dangerous dogs, and I'm not quite sure how that works, but the registry, so that if someone in Vancouver had a dangerous dog and that was identified, and they decided to move to Asous, that that information would be available to anybody in the province. And that was definitely passed by the people that were there. I'm not quite sure how, what it looks like. I thought it was interesting last week that in Montreal, they have, it may cause some concerns, but they've passed a bylaw banning pit bulls or pit bull crosses, and I'm sure there's going to be more on that issue, because it was, it's causing problems already and people trying to challenge it. However, it just, it sort of shows that we're not, that this is commonplace to deal with this everywhere. Anybody? Yeah. Counselor Youngberg.
Thanks, Mayor McCordough. Ms. Van Veenem, when we read the bylaw, does it say muzzled and on leash?
Yes.
Together?
Yes.
Because I had an episode on Saturday with two of them, and evicting them from a premise, and she continued to put them on a leash and walk them on the sidewalk, and I said, no, in the yard, they were off-leash, on the sidewalk, they were on leash and on muzzled. So does the muzzle apply today if someone called into the office?
The current bylaw requires a muzzle on pit bull or pit bull crosses or the restricted breeds that are currently under the bylaw.
Okay. So I did ask her to call, so.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else want to? This is a tricky issue, because we put it, you know, the last time that it came to council, we were, you know, quite concerned about it, but if we've had that many attacks in the last two years, I think that we need to sort of bring it up again and look at it, but.
However, we're not prohibiting this bylaw, we are just restricting. So we've taken the word prohibited out, and we've gone back to the restriction. However, those restrictions still apply to those same breeds.
Absolutely.
And that means they do have to be muzzled and on leash when they're off their property.
So what you're asking us to do is, is...
Counselor Campbell has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
I know, I know we discussed this at length a while back, and I think Asous Times enjoyed their longest comment section in the history of the newspaper, so it is a contentious issue for sure with strong opinions on both sides. When we talk about the banning of breeds, I'm comfortable with the language of restricting those breeds, but I would like to make a motion that the animal control and licensing bylaw number thirteen sixteen twenty sixteen be forwarded to a regular meeting of council.
Thank you. Are you?
Second.
Anyone else like to speak to it? All in favor? Thank you very much. That's passed.
And that will happen after it's gone to our lawyers.
Absolutely. Thank you. So it won't be this afternoon. Okay, next on our, on our list is park washrooms and a report from Director of Operational Services.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Typically during the autumn and winter seasons, Operational Services closes all but two of the public washrooms in our park as a result of decreased public demand. Last winter season, Operational Services maintained Gyro and Goodman Parks washrooms. Unfortunately, on January twenty-ninth of two thousand and sixteen, the men's washroom at Gyro Park was vandalized, suffering approximately forty thousand dollars' worth of damage, which is still being repaired. The replacement toilets and urinals were actually just installed last week. Operational Services also received numerous complaints from the public last winter about people camping in the washrooms at Gyro Park overnight and leaving the facility in a somewhat less-than-desirable condition. Overview: It has been suggested that in order to reduce the possibility of further vandalism this winter at Gyro Park, that these washrooms would remain closed, and the washrooms at the Marina would remain open. The Marina washroom is smaller and less likely to be used for overnight camping, but still would provide service of citizens walking the trails along the shores of Asous Lake. Operational Services is therefore proposing to leave open and maintain the following parks washrooms this winter season: the Marina washroom, the Goodman Park washroom, and the public washroom at Town Hall. So the options for council are that council recommend opening and maintaining Marina, Goodman Park, and Town Hall public washrooms for the winter season of two thousand and sixteen seventeen. Option two is that council recommend opening and maintaining Gyro Park, Goodman Park, and Town Hall public washrooms for the winter season. Option number three is that council requests additional information before making decision, and administration recommends option number one.
Thank you very much. I had a question. When you, it was mentioned that people might be sleeping in the washrooms overnight.
Mm-hmm.
I know that in the summertime, the washrooms are locked and closed. Are they done that way in the wintertime, and is it slightly different hours?
The, well, there's timed door locks on all of these bathroom facilities, so they automatically lock when we tell them. Like, I think it's in the winter, it's six o'clock or something like that, eight o'clock. But what happens is that people will jam the door open, so that unless the door closes, they don't lock.
Oh, I see.
So they will put a rock in the door, and they will keep the door open, and then they have access to and from. Or they get into the washrooms before.
Before it locks.
Before it locks, and then when the door locks, they're in already, so.
I see. Okay. It's not somebody sitting there with a key, so.
No, they're automatic door locks.
Yeah. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So when I was reading this over, I'm a little conflicted with closing the Gyro Park washroom. That regrettable circumstance where it was vandalized last year was clearly criminal behavior.
Yes.
Somebody either spontaneously or pre-planned or premeditated went in there and caused a lot of damage. A regrettable situation. I would never like to see a reoccurrence of it. The camping inside of it, once again, a very regrettable situation, but I don't think there are compelling enough reasons for me to support closing a major amenity in our community. That walking thing that we're all promoting in our trails and everything is becoming a very, very big part of our community, and people not only walk through there and through that area, it's becoming more predominant in our community. And because we have, there's really no sensible way to bring this up, because we have such a aging demographic that likes to walk, along with that comes the convenience of washrooms and that kind of thing. That's very important to a lot of people in our community. Yes, the Marina washroom could maybe, you know, look after that need. Certainly Goodman Park has to stay open, because that's an area that's really, really well-used, requires a washroom, but I would sure like to see the Gyro Park one stay open. It's, people know where it is, they recognize what it is, and it's just something that's a real amenity, and, you know, the overnight camping thing, I, you know, maybe we have to, you know, bump up the bylaw inspection of it. I mean, I, I don't know, you know, bylaw enforcement inspection. I don't know, I just, I have some difficulty supporting closing that one because of those reasons.
Fair enough.
Counselor Youngberg.
Yes, thanks, Mayor McCordough. Also, I'm sure thankful of all the work that you've done, Director Dinwiddie, but I would really hate to see that Gyro Park closed, because I live there and see what's going on. I, it's busy all the time during the day, but I would really ask if we can't put bylaw enforcement to check the doors at six o'clock, so there's no rocks in the door, there's nobody in the washrooms, and they, and they're fully locked at the time that the bylaw enforcement officer leaves, because that was one of the issues that did happen when the vandalism took place. It was just so easy for them to get in. It was late at night, and all those kids camp around that building late at night. If they can't get in, I would think that it would be, you know, advisable that we just survey it a little bit more before the, before we decide to close them.
Okay.
Because they're well-used.
No doubt about it.
Yeah, they are.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Do you have any stats around usage by relating to how much tissue you put in? I mean, you wouldn't know the exact number, but I mean, you'd know if you refilled the tissue more.
There's a lot of science behind that question.
No, I don't have any stats right now, but I, there is no argument that Gyro Park washroom is very well-used.
That's right.
And there's no denying that. It was just, we're just looking for council's direction on, you know, if you want it open, that's fine. We can leave it open, and we'll certainly request that bylaws make sure that there was nobody in the washroom late at night when it closes, but.
I can appreciate the request for additional bylaw support, but that's going to cost extra money.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven-day-a-week operation, to have somebody just pick up and drop in, it's not, not something we have within our, within our, that's why we rent to time door locks and trying to get away from that type of, of, you know, manpower costs. But we can, we can bring, you know, we can bring that number to council, and...
I think the acting mayor for the month should take on that role.
Why are you looking at me?
I know, it's jammed out.
Would there have any thought of changing the hours? We're supposed to say at four, if that's when bylaw gets off?
Well, bylaw doesn't work normal hours.
Okay.
Again, if council wants to identify those hours, we, you know, it's kind of hit and miss. You know, we have evening walkers, because it's lighted, and if we close at four in the wintertime, then we're going to get complaints that it's not open at six. I think we've tried to find that time, and I'm not sure what that time is. I think it's six o'clock.
I think it's till six, yeah. I think it's like seven in the morning till six at night.
They're automatically locked at six, then.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, so that, we try to accommodate what is the walking activities, and so, you know, that's what we'll try and do.
Well, you had a comment again?
I just think the cost of the bylaw officer going by for, that cannot take any more than one hour every day to just go and check the locks and drive away, and if in fact that cost is broken out of the contract, and we see that it's far less than forty thousand dollars. So I would really like to see us fully examine this and have the bylaw contract looked at seriously.
Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Just for clarity, my thing is about the community amenity and the benefit that it would add to our community, keeping it open. I don't feel a real strong appetite to change anything that's down there, just don't close it. That's kind of where I'm at right now. And I'm not sure what you would like to do. Are you going to reevaluate this and bring it back again?
No, no, we're just looking for council's direction, and, you know, we, this is an administrative type of decision, but it's also level of service.
Yeah.
And council makes decisions on levels of service. There's no, you know, money here, per se, but we will maintain the Goodman washroom open if that's, if that's council's direction.
Yeah, if you'd like Gyro, Goodman, and the Town Hall washroom here to be open, then that's what we'll do.
So do you want to do this by motion, or?
Yeah, an option. Would you like to?
Yeah, I think we presented it as a council decision administrative type of operation direction, so we'd appreciate a motion to that effect, which was identified as option one.
Yeah, so is he like option number two?
Yeah, yeah.
Number two, sorry.
Counselor Rhodes.
Yeah, I think the Town Hall one, it's a given that it'll be open all the time. So, yeah, option number two.
Are you seconding that? Anyone else? All in favor of option number two?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Asous Lakeview Cemetery grounds. Um, next is the, uh, Asaius Lakeview Cemetery grounds.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Um, the Operational Services Department carries out all maintenance activities as well as all interments at the town of Asaius Lakeview Cemetery. Uh, these maintenance activities include, but are not limited to, grass mowing and trimming, litter pickup and removal, snow clearing, et cetera. Over time, a large number of graves at the Lakeview Cemetery have had numerous items added to the grave site by their surviving family members. These items range from elaborate fencing, vases, toys, solar-powered lights, and even the occasional alcoholic beverage bottle, to numerous flower displays. And there are all sorts of pictures, I believe, that you have about what it looks like. Uh, all of these items are in contravention of existing cemetery bylaw number one, two, three, six, Part Four. Uh, it says Conduct in the Cemetery, Section Seven, uh, restrictions which are listed below. And on the existing bylaw, the restrictions are, uh, boxes, shelves, toys, wire screens, arbors, trussels, tripods, or any other objects are prohibited on any grave or lot with the following exceptions: Tripods may be used to hold wreaths and sprays of flowers during interment. Cut and artificial flowers, wreaths, and floral offerings may be placed on the grave but may be removed by the cemetery administrator when their condition is considered to be detrimental to the appearance or proper maintenance of the cemetery. Metal or plastic vases may be set by the cemetery administrator flush with the ground. No mausoleum or ground vault may be constructed or erected on any lot in the cemetery. No lot may be defined by fence, railing, coping, hedge, or any other marker except a memorial as prohibited under this bylaw. No lot may be decorated with trees, shrubs, or plants, but may be decorated by placing cut flowers. Uh, the presence of the above noted items, um, impedes the activities of the Operational Services staff to maintain the grounds at the Asaius Lakeview Cemetery to the highest standard possible. Given the sensitive idea of the situation, Operational Services Department is seeking council's direction on the degree of town bylaw enforcement at the Asaius Lakeview Cemetery. If stricter enforcement is desired, Operational Services Department suggests that the surviving families of those individuals interned at the cemetery whose grave sites are in contradiction to the existing bylaw be notified and given an opportunity to remove the various items from the grave. Not all grave sites may have local family contacts present in the community. Therefore, information related to potential removal of prohibited items will be advertised in the Asaius Times in order to ensure wide public knowledge of bylaw enforcement. If, after a period of two months, the items are still in place at the cemetery, Operational Services staff will then remove and dispose of these items. It should also be noted that numerous grave sites have had various concrete borders and coverings installed by their surviving families, not the town of Asaius, several of which have now significantly deteriorated, and I believe you have several pictures of the deteriorated grave sites. Operational Services Department suggests that these surviving families also be contacted and informed of the deteriorated state of their relatives' grave site and be given two-month period to effect repairs. The options for council: Option one, that council recommends stricter enforcement of the existing cemetery bylaw one, two, three, six. Option two is that council does not recommend stricter enforcement of the existing bylaw one, two, three, six. Or, option three, council requests additional information and administration is simply seeking this discussion on this matter prior to removing the item forward to a regular council meeting.
Thank you very much. And, um, and the pictures really do tell a story, don't they? Um, I was out there this summer at a funeral, which is how I sort of noticed that many of these graves were in great disrepair. It wasn't, um, it was more, not all the stuff they put on the graves that, that I noticed, it was the fact that many of them were sinking.
Yep.
And that, um, the funeral that I was at, the husband had been buried in nineteen sixty-two, so it was quite difficult, um, and his wife just died. It was quite difficult for the town staff and the diggers to actually get in there because it was the old section and, um, and, you know, because she was going to be buried in the same, in the same plot. My concern was, um, what about any kind of liability? And I was worried that somebody would trip and fall or whatever.
It could happen on, like I said, all that concrete work and stuff like that was not installed by us.
I know.
It was installed by those families, but it has sunk in, a lot of it has sunk in, it has deteriorated, and it would certainly leave a tripping hazard for, uh, surviving people, family who was coming to visit. If they're elderly or anybody could trip easily.
So, um, I thank you very much for, for bringing this up and taking all these pictures and, uh, I'm certainly willing to, to move forward on this too. Councilor Rhodes?
Well, once again, I'd like to present an opposing viewpoint. Have to be very, very careful. I don't want to get myself into the same trap as when I said that I visited a dozens of marijuana shops, but I have been to a few graveyards, um, one of which I have a grandfather in Fort McLeod that was buried there in nineteen sixteen. And many of the sites he has included are, are caving in, very, very similar to this. I guess through settlement and perhaps poor construction when they were put in and that kind of thing. And they went through a similar process in, in Fort McLeod to determine what they were going to do. And at the end of the day, the biggest obstacle was to motivate descendants to do something about it.
That could be a problem.
Yeah, that, that was a, the factor that kind of caused them to, say, shy away from the enforcement of doing it. Um, many of these older grave sites, you know, families have come and gone. I don't even know how we're going to contact a lot of them.
That could be...
Even if you do get in touch with them, and let's say they're a resident in our community, how do you force them into going in and doing it?
We were just going to ask nicely.
Yeah. I understand all of that, but at the end of the day, if they refuse, is it worth all of the effort that we go through? Some other communities have tried this, uh, and it, it's all common sense and logic, but is it a worthwhile endeavor? That's kind of where I'm at right now. Many of these older portions of graveyards that are still used for newer burials and that kind of thing, it's kind of a character thing, you know? People are not unhappy with looking at those kind of things. The safety aspect and some of the fixtures that have been added, I certainly support that, but, boy, I just see it a tremendous amount of challenges coming, trying to get somebody that may not be even interested to locate them and then try to encourage them either nicely or more forcibly to, to upgrade and fix that. But that's sadly an issue. Boy, I just see that as being a whole, you know, a whole can of worms that we may not want to open up.
Um, fair enough. As part of the issue, I think, is that, um, people, um, who are now just recently interning a loved one or something in our cemetery, they see, you know, maybe they want to put up a fence just like the neighbor has done over here, and it's hard to tell them, well, you can't put up a fence because our bylaw says you can't. And then they look over, well, what about over here?
Yeah.
They got a fence, they got lights, they got, they got everything going on over here. Uh, how come I can't do it? And the reason is because you asked at this time that, you know, we could, we're going to enforce the bylaw, but back when that person was installed, apparently, we weren't going to, we didn't enforce the bylaw, so. It's rather inconsistent out there right now.
I know. So, um, not forcing them to fix the cement on the old graves may be, may be a, a concern, but I still think that, that the, uh, Part Four, Conduct in the Cemetery, needs to have a reminder to people. Um, I think that, my feeling is that they should be, that the, the grave site should be, the people should be contacted, um, something put in the Asaius Times, maybe that's happening right now. And, um, and I think that people should be aware that there are some rules and regulations out there.
Yep, there are big signs out there.
But, oh, I've seen them, but the trouble is that people are not following them. So, I think we need to do that. Uh, asking people, because I looked at some of the graves out there that were falling apart and they were so worn, I couldn't even see a name on them. So, it may be very difficult to contact those people, but I definitely think asking people to be more respectful and to follow the, the rules and not put, you know, some of the pictures, some of the stuff up is a good way to go. I remember, that's my feeling. Councilor Youngberg, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I'll thank you. And, um, I do visit a couple of, um, cemeteries, uh, quite regularly. And what they do in Kelowna, just as an example, is if we put things on the graves, the public works comes and takes them all off after one month. So, they, all they do is as they're mowing, they know that it's been there. I don't think one month is enforced, but let's just say I put one on in December, I go there in February and it's gone. But everybody's is gone, not just mine. So, I think that if things were to disappear from the cemetery and in the Usip's case, back in the mid-nineties, our flowers would disappear. So, whoever was doing the maintenance of the cemeteries at that time, when you have a flat headstone, you know that whatever you put there is going to be gone because they have to mow. So, that, um, and, and yet I'm looking at the pictures and I'm seeing that there's plastic all over the place and, and on the flat level lawn, which, I mean, I think at one point in time, I just wish I could have, would have had a picture in the nineties, but I don't think they were there in the nineties like that.
I don't know, but they're there now.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering about, about the bylaw, that maybe it was enforced for a while and then now it's, now the fellow who mows the lawn just are not taking them away. But if, my point is, is if you start taking the stuff away, it will not go back.
Well, well, like I said, that's why we were willing to ask people, especially in the, the grass section, you know?
Yes.
We would give them, uh, two months, you know, maybe there was a sentimental value to the teddy bear or the bunny or whatever happens to be there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We would like to give you the opportunity to pick that up, you know, have family members take it, maybe take it home or something like that. Uh, if, if after two months it was still there, then we were quite willing to go and remove that.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we'd like the people a chance to pick up that token, that memento.
Sure. Mr. Remankle?
Part of the issue is that, uh, you know, it makes it very difficult for Operational Services to, to work in around the sites. And in fact, occasionally, we do nick something and, and, and then we get complaints that, and requests to replace items that are placed illegally. So, uh, you know, certainly, that's an important part of this whole process, is that the expect, the expectation of people, once they put something there, it's going to stay, even though it's illegal.
Yeah.
And, uh, that makes it very cluttered, very difficult for us to work in there.
So...
And respectfully, uh, the ability to enforce the bylaw at some point in time, uh, go through a process of notification would certainly assist us and, and I think in the operations in the future.
So, do you see, um, putting something in the paper or sending out letters to, um, to people? Uh, is, is that the best way to, to handle it?
Well, we'll, we'll leave it to a, to a positive communication message.
Okay.
I don't know how, uh, how many, you know, letters would have to be sent out, but certainly, as mentioned in the report, we would minimally do, do a, a public advertising and provide for appropriate response time.
Perfect. I think that's a good idea. Can I just ask, the, the park that, that has the grass, which I know is the newer part, that's easier to, um, to keep clean and tidy. What about the other parts? Is there anything that Operational Services does in the, uh, in, in the rocks and the pathways or...
Uh, well, in the, in the areas that are all cement, no, we don't do a whole lot of maintenance work there.
I didn't think you could.
But it's basically the grass areas that we're talking about.
Sure.
Uh, like I said, if we have to weed eat around each of those ornamental fixtures, it, it takes quite time-consuming to do that.
Absolutely.
Whereas if we were able to remove them all and then mow, it's a lot quicker.
So, what's the timeframe? So, if I put something on the graves, how long can I leave it there? Does it say anyplace where?
Nope, it doesn't say a time. Well, it, it...
So, if I take something out on Tuesday and then you're mowing Thursday, it's gone on Thursday?
Yes. Well, it could be, yeah. Right now, it wouldn't be, but...
Mm-hmm.
And now, we are mowing, we are still mowing the cemetery quite regularly, uh, and I don't know the exact day that they tend to go out there because it changes every week. It depends when we get to it with the other mowing that we do, but, uh, we would tend to remove, like I said, we pull out the flower pots and vases and stuff like that as best we can. And some of them unfortunately do get damaged with the lawnmowers because, uh, what has happened in particular cases is, uh, people had a flat mark, a memorial marker, but they put a big concrete border, uh, which was illegal around that border, and now that border infringes upon another grave site and so the mower can't actually drive over it, so it makes it more awkward.
Well, I think that a positive message and saying that's been brought to our attention, maybe, you know, please, um, would you read the rules again and make sure that you're following those and that we will be following up on them? Makes sense to me. Anybody else? Okay, so what is it, what is it that you...
Well, we'd, we'd like to just ensure that, uh...
So, option number one?
We're following council's direction and, and then we would, uh, work to strictly enforce the, more strictly enforce the bylaw.
Can I ask a question? Does that sort of include the graves that are sacred or does that come out of the resolution?
That, well, the, the sinking, the sinking of the graves is not in, in the, in the bylaw, it's just all the, the ancillary pieces that are put on the...
Yeah, okay, that's great. Yeah, we probably wouldn't end up doing, like, in the concrete section, if you will, we wouldn't do much with the sinking of those graves. We would just leave them as they are.
Good.
But what we're more concerned about really is with the grassed areas, trying to get rid of...
Just getting more and more and more.
Yeah, like all of that stuff.